Some city employees will also be available to participate in the same manner.
You're unmuted.
First, we have the approval of minutes, report of correspondence by city clerk, public hearings. We have no ordinances on second reading. Ordinances on first reading, one, an ordinance to amend and supplement or revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick parking zones for bad persons. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement or revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, three, amend the management salary ordinance. Then we have Resolutions one through twenty-six, twelve was pulled. One, approve agenda amendments, two, approve payroll, three, authorize refunds for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of grant agreements for two thousand and twenty-two for the Safe and Secure Communities Grant Program. Five, approve request for solicitation of funds at various locations and dates throughout the city. Six, approve renewal of agreement with First Metro National Life. Seven, authorize professional service agreement with Garden State Veterinary Services. Eight, approve purchase of public property, one Ford F-250. Nine, approve award of contract with MSP Construction. Ten, approve amendment of Resolution R dash zero-three-one-eight-six-nine with Rico USA. Eleven, authorized purchase by police department with Eagle Point guns. Twelve was pulled. Thirteen, approve Chapter one fifty-nine budget insertion for animal control. Fourteen, approve Chapter one fifty-nine budget insertion for body-worn camera grant. Fifteen, authorize tax collector to transfer overpayments on several tax and utility accounts. Sixteen, authorize refund to Richard Dawson. Seventeen, approve award of contract with Yardway Construction. Eighteen, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance at five oh one Jersey Avenue. Nineteen, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance at one seventy-six Somerset Street. Twenty, approve award of contract with Hubbard Associates. Twenty-one, approve resolution to refer an amendment for the downtown redevelopment plan to the planning board. Twenty-two, authorize mayor and city clerk to execute endorsement agreements. Twenty-three, approve Chapter one fifty-nine budget insertion for asphalt art grants. Twenty-four, authorize acceptance of grant with Bloomberg Philanthropies. Twenty-five, approve resolution authorize three temporary sixteen-minute parking spaces. Twenty-six, authorize request for use of city property located to the north of Boyd Park. Then we have items for discussion by council, which are an OEM update, the proposed meeting schedule, and best practices worksheet. Comments? And that will begin at five thirty PM Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The meeting will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar. Council President Secora Ludwig.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home Street Tribune. Additionally, a forty-eight-hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, as is required by law.
The city council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing a teleconferencing system through which the public may participate. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the forty-eight-hour notice. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted. During the public comment period, those who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name, then called upon to speak one time and for no longer than five minutes during each public comment of the meeting. The timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and the speaker will be notified that their time has expired. Public meeting assistance accessed in the call-in number should call City Hall at seven three two, seven four five, five zero zero seven.
Thank you. Timely chant of the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence to reflect and honor our military personnel and law enforcement officers dedicated to their lives to protect freedom, safety, and democracy. May God guide them safely in their duties. Thank you.
Motion, seven minutes.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings. We have no ordinances for discussion on second reading. We have ordinances on first reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement or revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title ten Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten point two zero, Handicap Parking, Section ten point two zero point zero one zero, Schedule three nine, parking zones for handicap persons, add one five one Hale Street and two one seven Handy Street.
I move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at five thirty, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement or revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, add Chapter three point four zero payment in lieu of parking.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at five thirty, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. Then we have a, what do we have here? An ordinance to amend the management salary, two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two.
I move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at five thirty, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have Resolutions one through twenty-six, twelve was pulled. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to public comment on the resolutions only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolutions only, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through D. E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Miss Moore. Q through T.
Linda Stork.
Okay, Miss Stork. And letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on the resolution. Okay, Madam President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Mr. Cradaville, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Yes, good afternoon. Charlie Cradaville, C-R-A-T-O-V-I-L. I live on Sedan Street here in the second ward of New Brunswick. First one I want to ask about is Resolution six. This is a renewal of an agreement for a period of time beginning this July. Why are, why is the council only now getting and approving a renewal of this agreement here in November?
Mr. Goldberg, can you answer that question for us, please?
So, it was actually approved, signed earlier in the year, we just have the resolution now that was ready for approval.
So.
Thank you.
Wouldn't the normal practice be for the council to give their approval and then, and only then, for a resolution, you know, for an agreement to be signed?
Well, it was negotiated right.
Is there a particular reason this wasn't done, and that this is done in the opposite order than what's normal?
It was negotiated right.
So the negotiations were continuing into beyond July?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, move on to number fourteen, the body-worn camera grant. Can someone tell me, has a single body-worn camera been deployed? Are New Brunswick officers equipped with this, or are they lacking a legally required part of the uniform still?
There's been no change since last spring. They're still receiving equipment and are scheduled to start training this month.
Okay. Just remind you that, you know, there is a law on the books requires that all officers on patrol be wearing the body-worn camera as of June this year.
I believe you got a response from the Attorney General on that issue, did you not?
Yeah, absolutely did. I've spoken to the Attorney General, and, have you?
No, I wasn't the one inquiring about it, but I understood that.
Okay, because if I were on the council, I would be, I would be very, very concerned about this.
But everyone was in compliance, as they were following and trying and doing their best to get the equipment and moving forward with it.
Right, so, so you, do you believe, do you believe the department is in compliance?
I believe they're, they're taking the proper steps to be in compliance, yes.
Okay, so, again, I encourage you to review the actual law and the directive from the Attorney General, which is very clear that the deadline to be in compliance was June first, and you're not in compliance, you're out of compliance, so. I'll move on, though, because there's other important items on your agenda. Twenty-one, can you tell us what you're proposing to change in the downtown redevelopment plan? Does this have anything to do with the plans for new buildings on the former Farron site? And what specifically is this entail?
I don't believe this has anything to do with the Farron deck site, except for the fact that there are changes proposed in general in the downtown area, as far as specifics to this redevelopment plan that's going to be forwarded to the planning board. I don't have any of those, and I don't know if there are any specifics yet. Mr. Dominguez, are there any particulars to this that you'd like to speak to?
Not at this time, but to answer the gentleman's question, it is unrelated to the Hub, AKA Farron redevelopment plan, which is a separate plan altogether.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, the last one on your agenda. What is it that New Brunswick Development Corporation is going to be allowed to do north of Boyd Park? Are you, I guess, going to let them dump dirt there as part of their construction project? What exactly should the public expect to see as they, they drive past Boyd Park on Route eighteen?
Uh, this will be a staging area for PSENG and their equipment that they're going to be needing for the project.
Okay, so what kind of equipment, like vehicles and, you know, just, um, you know, electric transmission equipment?
Yeah, the big equipment that they're need, that they need for the power plant.
Uh, yeah, the power plant, so, um, yeah, I, I really want to beg you to cancel that.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville has expired. Who's next, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Miss Moore, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Good evening, Danielle Moore, M-O-O-R-E, Somerset Street. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Well, okay, first, I'd like to start off with twenty twenty-four and as well as maybe twenty-three, but wow, the city will be getting a twenty-five thousand dollar grant on this with this mural, this painting over on Remsen Avenue in Sedan Street, is this to go in this street, correct? And please, I, I hope this, after all, will not be any chalk paint. I'm not going to use the word permanent paint, the word permanent, but whatever type of paint that you use over for the other murals to last more than, over three to five months, not chalk paint, due to where, wow, sad to say, after our hard work for domestic violence, painting while the next morning it rained, where it ruined part of it? Please, come on, like I said, if the mayor cannot treat everyone equal, even though I say it, it's time for him to go, but for twenty-five thousand dollars? Wow, I hope, can you please tell me, is this going to be chalk paint or the same other type of long last, I'm not going to say permanent, long-lasting paint as the other murals you, they've been doing?
Yes, it's slated to be more of the long-lasting medium.
Well, why, I'm glad to hear, hear that, but I have to say, I have to see it to believe it, but believe it, due to where, like I said, yes, treat, treat different organizations equal. And honestly, I say, due to where, far as for domestic violence, that's something that was a very important protest. I don't see why you would even do it in chalk paint. It was a beautiful protest, yes, but like I say, please, you do one for one, treat, treat, treat equal. Then I will say, far as the body cameras, due to where, no, I do not believe New Brunswick is trying, they're trying to do everything to re, not, not to get these cameras, because like I said, they already proved they don't want it a long time ago, due to where you're saying you could not afford it. And what, you could afford it, but this is the third resolution on a situation with body cameras to go through within the past three months. What, a resolution went to over six hundred and fifty thou, fifty thousand dollars, saying that you've got to go to school to lessons, take lessons to wear body, body camera? No, I really think New Brunswick is avoiding wearing cameras, and honestly, they surely need them, because I'm glad, plenty of the people seen last night on Mr. Cradaville's video, where, wow, he wasn't doing nothing but doing, he was behind the tape with the shooting over on Seaman and Remsen Avenue. Wow, how the officer kept coming at him, then getting, getting mad just because he was being videotaped? Guilt, guilt, like, and then it shows how nasty, like I said, them street crimeers really are, and based on that you get these cameras immediately. To have Mr. Cradaville walk all the way around the corner, corner, and then, wow, how guilt, with the officer still with him recording, the officer got mad and left. Like I said, New Brunswick is avoiding cameras because they know they don't want to wear them. And how the council keeps taking up with the police department like they're really were, were working? No, like I say, you got good ones, you got bad ones, but you got a lot of them that are being paid to sit on their rear end, and it's very sad for New Brunswick, and like I said, hopefully it will get better. I do have one, one more, if you can just tell me what is seventeen, what part of Joyce Kilmer Avenue is this?
Mr. Valenti, do you have the specifics on the, on the sections of Joyce Kilmer?
Yes, I do. The project goes from Twelfth Street, which is the border of New Brunswick and North Brunswick, behind the middle school, to Loretto, that long stretch from Twelfth to Loretto.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I know that a resolution went through on part of Joyce Kilmer up that way being repaired. Does this have any connection to it? Or is this a bid that was put through for the company to match the same thing?
There have been several, several pieces of this that have gone through. I would need a specific to know if it was tied to this. I mean, there have been different phases and, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Miss Moore.
Okay, and then the last one, first, with the, what is this, with the solid waste twelve, with a five-year, with the county?
That was pulled, Miss Moore, that won't be, that's not on the agenda tonight. Thank you for your comments.
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Stork.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Stork, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Sure, good evening, my name is Linda Stork. I live at Twelve Park Boulevard, and Stork is spelled S-T-O-R-K.
Thank you.
So, I had a question about number four, the Safe and Secure Communities Grant. Does any part of that Safe and Secure Communities Grant, does it address the gun violence that's escalating in our city?
This supplements.
What would make me feel safe and secure?
This supplements two officers' salaries.
Well, oh, so nothing in specific, it just, it seems like that would be covered under the regular budget. I thought this would be something special to make the community more safe and secure.
Well, all of the policing that we do is to make the community safe and secure, so. It's, it's all related.
Well, right, but, but I mean, you know, the salaries were going to be covered, what if you didn't get the grant? I'm assuming their salaries were still going to be paid.
Yes, yes, they would.
Is that not correct?
No, that's correct.
So, to me, this would be extra money. Right. So this, I would think, would be extra money to do something above and beyond, take the community, for example, like, you know, we don't hear about any plan to specifically address the rise in gun violence, which is concerning. Um, yeah. Uh, as, as well as the, the other one that, you know, repeatedly catches my eye is the twelve thousand dollars for ammunition? Is that every three months? Or every, every three months, twelve thousand dollars for ammunition? Is that comparable to what other, other cities our size pay for just ammunition every three months?
If you'd like me to explain a little bit of that to you, ammunition is very expensive. It doesn't sound like you're familiar with that in general, but the reason why you're seeing so many of these come through on our agenda is because ammunition is also hard to get right now, so we can't buy it in bulk, in large bulk, like we did before, because it's just not available, because there is a shortage of it. So you're seeing more things pass on the agenda, but not necessarily more ammunition or more cost, except for whatever the increase in cost was not, like I said, not more ammunition than usual.
It's just being divided out over, I don't know, it seems like it's been seen this for a while, all right. Also, just, in general, the redevelopment plan is being amended, how? I understand the specifics aren't done yet, so the council is just giving a blanket approval to send an amended plan to the planning board, but the plan doesn't have any specifics? How can that be?
The, the way it works is that the council just refers an idea, basically, not an idea, but we say, okay, go ahead and put your redevelopment plan. We're not, we're not approving a redevelopment plan. We're saying, present the redevelopment plan to the planning board, and then if they approve it, then it would come back to council. So we're not approving a plan tonight, we're just approving the passage to send it to the planning board.
Oh, so, so you're approving, so you're approving the amendment going of the redevelopment plan, approving it going to the planning board?
Well, yes, we're approving, we're approving that. We're approving that it should be presented to the planning board.
Right, but it doesn't have any details yet?
No, those will be put forth at the planning board, who has the power to vote on it, and then it'll come back to council if they approve it.
Okay, so this is just, we, it's just the idea of an amendment that is not actually written, correct? You haven't seen what the amendment entails?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No, Madam President.
Somebody want to move the resolution?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have some items for discussion by council. I'm going to switch the order up a little bit. So first, I want to go over, I think, all to my council members, you've all received a copy of the proposed meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty-two, and it remains the first and third Wednesday of each month, with the additional meeting in the month of December to be determined for year-end business. And unless anybody has any specific questions at this time, I don't know if you'd like to address anything, Mr. Shami?
Madam Council President, no, I, I believe that the schedule of two thousand and twenty-two actually works out quite nicely. There, there's no, there's no conflicts between proposed meeting dates and, and legal holidays, and that's what we wanted the council to see by setting forth the, the calendar. So if the council is agreeable to the proposed schedule, which as usual is the first and third Wednesday of every month, I'll prepare a resolution at a future meeting to adopt that schedule going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Shami.
You're welcome.
And then, then we had the best practices worksheet, and council members, again, you should have received a copy of these, which I believe was this afternoon. So I'm just going to ask that you go through them, and if you have any questions, Mr. Jules and Mr. Mulryne are more than happy to answer them. But did everybody receive that this afternoon?
Yes.
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm muted, yes.
Thank you. And now we'll have a, an OEM update from Director Rawls.
Good evening, good evening. Okay, COVID cases continue to fall, but vaccination continues to be a priority. Also regarding COVID boosters, if you receive the Johnson and Johnson COVID nineteen vaccine and are eighteen or older, you're eligible for a booster shot at any vaccine location at least two months after your first shot. If you receive two doses of the Pfizer or Moderna COVID nineteen vaccines and are sixty-five or older, a long-term care resident, an adult with underlying medical conditions, or an adult at increased risk of COVID nineteen location, COVID nineteen exposures because of your job or living situations, you're eligible for a booster shot at any vaccine location at least six months after your second shot. Free vaccination and free COVID testing continue to be widely available. Vaccination locations can be found on the state website. We will continue to share major We will continue to share major COVID news via social media and our city website, cityofnewbrunswick.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I just have a few comments I'd like to make tonight. Um, first, everybody, remember that the Veterans Day Parade is next Thursday, November 11th, commencing in Highland Park at 11:30 a.m. And concluding in New Brunswick at Monument Square Park with a ceremony for the Hub City Heroes Banner installation. So that'll be a very nice ceremony to attend. And then I wanted to follow up on a question that was made regarding the Make It Count program. And from what I understand, the numbers I was given was that we've utilized approximately $6,000 of donations to house seven displaced residents or families of the Charles Street incident during the storm at the Red Carpet Inn, and that was from the period of October 5th to November 1st. And there are still approximately $3,000 left in the account. Um, and I did request for, um, a, a better qualifying disbursement, um, amount. So I don't have those handy, but that is generally where the funds went. And now, um, like, Council, Escobar, do you have any comments you'd like to make today?
Yes, so quick, I want to thank, um, the city hall staff. They fired department, the Latino firefighters, um, Sheriff Smith, who had a great activity over the weekend at Pine Street, the police department, and all the other organizations who had, it was planning to do this weekend in New Brunswick for the children in terms of Halloween, uh, for the Dia de los Muertos, Dia of the Dead. They were wonderful, um, activities. Uh, so thank you to all of them, uh, for ensuring that our community was celebrating in different places at the same time. I'm Mercado Esperanza also. So thank you to all of them.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Uh, thank you. Uh, just like to thank all those who voted yesterday. No matter how you voted, you got out and you voted. So, again, get out and vote anytime you can when we have those voting elections. It, it helps. Obviously, we have a really tight race for governor. A reminder that, uh, Sunday is a, a return to, uh, regular time. Daylight saving time ends on Sunday, so don't forget to switch those clocks. And also, just a reminder again, with the Veterans Day being on a Thursday, there is a parade going on. And from what I understand, from Highland Park to New Brunswick, uh, rather than going down George Street, I think they're going off Nielsen Street. Is that possibly someone could correct me or something like that? So, love to have everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Egan, do you have any comments this evening?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming, do you have anything you'd like to say tonight?
Not at this time.
Thank you. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting for public comment for up to five minutes per person. Time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any member of the public wishes to address the council, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in 0704 will need to dial *6 to unmute themselves. Letters A through D. E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradville.
Okay, Mr. Cradville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through P.
Linda Stork.
Okay, Ms. Stork. And letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through...
My name is Paul McLean.
Mr. McLean?
Yes, thanks.
Marge Kerber, you missed me, I think. I, I don't know if I'm on mute or what.
Okay, Ms. Kerber, I have you.
Thank you.
Anyone else A through Z who wishes to address the council for public comment? Okay, Madam President, the first person on the list is Ms. Marge Kerber.
Thank you. Ms. Kerber, please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record.
Sure. Marge Kerber, K-E-R-B-E-R. Two Comstock Street. I, I unfortunately met, I, I missed the beginning of the meeting, okay? So I don't know if this is brought up or not. I suspect that it wasn't, okay? I am very concerned about these two shootings this week. Two days, two or three days apart, okay? Um, I, I really think that, um, the police need to be doing some, maybe they are doing something, okay? But I think they need to let the public know exactly what they're doing about this, because I think this is getting to the point of really being crazy. You know, every other day, there's a shooting, okay? One was up by, by St. Peters, okay? This one, yesterday, was by me in the second ward. And, and I just think that, you know, we need to understand what the police are doing about this, if they're doing anything at all. I just, I would hope that they are. But I'm really concerned about this, as are my neighbors, okay? So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerber.
Okay. Madam President, the next person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradville.
Thank you. Hello again, Mr. Cradville. The floor is yours. Mr. Cradville?
Yes, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today.
Hello.
Um, I want to start by saying rest in peace to Azim Seiright and Lorenzo Hill-Staden, who were both killed this week in those, uh, tragic gun murders that the last speaker was talking about. And I want to take a moment of my time to extend sincere condolences to those families, um, who lost a loved one and, and, and all their friends. Um, can somebody tell me how many murders there have been this year in the city of New Brunswick?
I think you'll have to contact the Police Department for that. I think you need to put that request in writing. I think that's a policy they have with you.
So you have, you don't know how many murders there've been this year?
I don't have an updated, I didn't ask today what it was. So, no, I, I don't have, I don't have that information.
Okay. Well, is the mayor on the call?
No, he is not.
Is the police director on the call?
No, he is not.
Is the police deputy director on the call?
No, he is not.
Is the police deputy chief on the call?
No, he is not.
Is there anyone on this call from the police department?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Can they tell us how many murders there've been in our city this year?
Captain Golduski, if you'd like to answer, or if you use the format of email, um, it's up to you.
I don't have an exact number. I would, I can forward that question to Deputy Director Miller, and he can respond to, uh, Mr. Cradville.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is really disappointing and unacceptable. Um, you know, I know there's a lot of shootings in New Brunswick, but when a life is lost, you ought to take note. You ought to mark that down. You ought to keep track of that. And what it seems is that the police department and the political leadership of the city is turning a blind eye to the extreme gun violence that is taking lives, killing people every day. Here in New Brunswick is scary for a lot of families. If you, if you have kids in this city, and they walk to and from school, and you're hearing that just the other day, somebody was gunned down in broad daylight. Uh, I know some people try to say, oh, these things, people knew each other, so you don't have to worry if you're just a random person. That wasn't true back in April, when a woman shot and killed a guy who was just driving a car. He was just driving a taxi, uh, 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 you know, giving somebody a ride, and he lost his life, uh, in the middle of the day, right near a park. And the response from the city is really weak. You need to do better. You need to join with the community. And you need to, at the, at a minimum, keep track of this. And at every meeting, there should be a report from the police department telling you how many murders there've been, how many shootings there've been, and what they're doing about it. But, you know, what we, what we see here is the, the, the city council meetings are, um, basically announcements that you want us to hear, and never any of the, uh, important or difficult truths and facts that, you know, are, are apparent to those of us that are living in the community. I live, I live on Sedham Street near Remsen. This killing last night was a block away from my house. And it's, you know, tragic for all involved. And, you know, some, a person spoke tonight on this call and said they were concerned, and all you had to say was, thanks, who's next? You didn't take a moment to say, our, 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 our hearts go out to the families who lost someone. May they rest in peace. Uh, you know, you didn't even have the, the, uh, reflex, the compassion that, uh, you know, political leaders need to have. You need to, to love your people, and when they're going through trauma, you need to stick up for them. And, uh, you know, I, 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 I see it, I, 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 I hope that after I'm done talking, you'll have something to say about this problem, because it's been going on the whole time I've been in New Brunswick. And it's getting worse than it's ever been before. And the council is still in denial about it. The police department is not doing enough. They're not being transparent. And the council and mayor seem like you couldn't care less. The mayor still hasn't commented on the mass shooting that happened more than a year ago. Claims two lives, seven more people injured. What do you, what do you...
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cradville. Your time has expired. Who's next on the list, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, we have a Mr. Paul McLean.
Thank you. Mr. McLean, if you can please spell your name, uh, spell your last name for us and give us your address for the record. Mr. McLean?
Please dial *6 to unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry about that.
Mr. McLean, are you with us?
Yes, I believe...
Oh, that's okay. Can you please just state, spell your last name and give us your address for the record, please?
Yes. My name is Paul McLean, spelled M-C-L-E-A-N. I live at 225 Hale Street in New Brunswick.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, thanks. Uh, I have been to city council a couple of times before. I'm, I'm concerned with a infrastructural problem. Um, the sewer line in front of my house, the street in front of my house fills with water with any significant rain. Um, this happened recently, it's last Friday. It happened when we had four inches of rain. I won't even talk about what happened with Hurricane Ida, because that was so, uh, exceptional. But this has been an ongoing problem. And, um, this past incident is also very bad on Baldwin Street, uh, where this, uh, storm sewer line runs as well. It's very hard for cars to pass. The entirety of the street is filled with water. The water comes up to, um, over the sidewalk in front of my house, and water even runs from the street into my yard, uh, because of the direction of flow. The city engineer knows about this problem. All of the neighbors know about this problem because of its notoriety. And I'm going to have to keep coming to the city and complaining about this structural problem until it's addressed.
Thanks. Do you have any other comments, Mr. McLean?
Uh, not at this time. Again, I'm going to, um, keep on complaining about this issue and contacting different offices, as well as coming to city council to express my dissatisfaction. Thank you very much for your time.
I understand that. I just want to ask, uh, Mr. Valenti, are you aware of this issue on those two streets that the gentleman just described?
Yes, we are. In fact, um, our maintenance contractor, um, Montana is hopefully scheduled for next week. Uh, the problem exists between the pipe that connects the catch basin that's on Baldwin Street, and that runs between that catch basin and to the catch basin that is on the corner of Baldwin and Livingston Avenue. About 125 or 150 feet that have to be replaced. Uh, we were able to use new diagnostic equipment with a camera, and we localized the issue in that length of pipe. And, uh, Montana Construction, again, is, uh, scheduled, I hope, within the week. Uh, they've just been busy with a bunch of other reactions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Valenti. Mr. McLean, did you hear the response?
I did. But does that mean that the existing pipe is being replaced? Or is it additional line being constructed? Or is this only about flushing the line, which is a reaction to the problem, not a proactive solution to the problem?
They will be, they will be out there next week, and it sounded like they were going to address the issue that was, that caused the problem, which was in the catch basin. So someone will be out there next week, uh, hopefully to start looking at it for you. So it is not going by the wayside. They are aware of it. And it is, it is scheduled, uh, to be taken care of.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I beg your pardon?
Madam Council President, uh, the pipe is scheduled to be replaced. There's deficiencies, there's infiltration into the pipe that connects the two inlets.
Okay. Mr. McLean?
Um, I have no further comment at this time. I, I'm glad to hear something might happen with, as a solution. And, um, and I'll come back again if, if I have continuing concerns, okay? Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you. Who's next, Madam Clerk? Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours. Ms. Moore?
Please dial *6 to unmute yourself if necessary.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can. Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
I, I would just start setting the same thing I've been saying to the residents. Come on, think about the future. We do not need a mayor or council member who keeps covering each other's rear end due to where, like I said, I don't feel that the police department is doing their jo, job at all. Too much is happening. And I, I didn't get the chance to finish, Mr. Anderson. When you want to see that the police department's not doing their job, when you're willing to do a walk, please, I will surely guide you the way. Because, wow, every time they CC me, wow. They'll, they'll, right away, guilt due to where they know they're not working. If guys on construction work, wow, three other officers just chatting there, doing nothing. Wow. We have two police officers standing on a phone at train station every morning. New Jersey Transit has their own police. They can sit at Linden Broadway. They can sit at New Brunswick. We need our police officers throughout the city of New Brunswick. What we, I say even the sheriff department should get involved due to where courthouses aren't really open like they were. They need to get involved. But, Council President, one question I do have. Uh, can, can I get an answer from Mr. Shammy? And I wasn't sure what captain that was, that's in the office. Would you please tell me, is it illegal for a licensed driver to drive with jet black tinted windows if you're not a police officer or detective?
I know there's, there's definitely a certain level of tint that is illegal. Um, cats...
I would like to hear from Mr. Shammy. I would like to hear from Mr. Shammy, under the law. Someone under the law, please.
Ms., Ms. Moore, I just told you.
Well, okay, I'm not going to let you kill... Okay, I'm not going to let you kill my time. But due to where, yes, uh, if, if that's the situation, then the New Brunswick officers need to start ticketing and towing cars like they did. Like I said, it's amazing how when New Brunswick was colored, the same laws today that it was then, how you did it before and you don't do things now. It's getting very upsetting. And like I said, due to where it speaks the truth to the mayor and, and, and the police department. It's time for them to go. Due to where, come on, come, come on. It, it, it's very sad, and it's, it's, New Brunswick is getting off the hook. But I will say to one officer, and I, after I say this, I hope he continues his great, great job. I never did this, but I will say, October 2021, the Officer of the Month, that is Officer Lugo, where I've been seeing him at least over 10 times, riding tickets on Livingston Avenue, French Street, towing cars away while putting up safety signs. That's what you call an officer who is really doing something and not sitting on their rear end all day, just... just wa- watching, watching, doing whatever goes on. And please, spread your little heart, your great work to the other officers. I hope to continue to see your great work. But like I said, do you think I feel the police department is doing their job? No, they're not. I will say thank you to Sergeant Limerling, Limerling, due to where discussing the case of the raid at 231 Joycomer Avenue. Certain things, I don't know the law. He taught me. I'm not happy of what happened with the raid, due to where, after all the stress of being handcuffed for three hours and not a suspect, due to where my brother did have two seizures afterwards. Please, New Brunswick and the state, get your addresses and your- your- your people the- the correct way. I will say thank you to Mr. Jones as well, uh, for handling the situation with the Health Department, which I do wanna see fined with this store on the corner of French and Lewis for opening up products, putting their germs on it, and then gluing them back together and then selling them. I- I surely will request the paper from the city and the Middlesex County. I would thank Mr. Jones as well for extending the parking where I asked him, I said, "Due to where the river is, still high on the high side." Where he extended it on the twenty-six as well. I do thank you for your help on- on that. I will say thank you. I know there's two sergeants aboys, but I'm not talking about the sergeant aboys for traffic. I will say on the thirty-first, due to where I have a situation with this dispatcher, five oh seven, whenever I'm on call, which please tell this lady, wow, yes, it is very unusual that I call. Call, keep calling the police for accident, calling, calling for help with someone. Please, tell her not to get nasty, due to where the situation. Sometimes, what, due to where I'm not gonna stand on scene, "Ooh, he did this," and then what, "Somebody follow me home, risk my life." But I thank the officer for coming to my h- house afterwards and we dealing with the situation. I do thank you on that, that. I will say thank you to Mr. Tom Valente for meeting me today at Joycomer.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for your comments. Your time has expired. Who's next, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Thorp.
Thank you. Ms. Thorp, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to start by saying that it's very disappointing to me that none of the, um, top police brass see fit to attend the city council meeting in order to, I think that, you know, we should, the public should hear a report on a- on a regular basis and- and that they should be available to answer questions. Um, I mean, they make the big bucks. If you have to write it in their job description, then write it in their job description. Um, but I- I- I think that, you know, the public deserves that. And, um, it is- it is just very upsetting. This, the- the shooting over on- at- at Seaman Street in Handy. It's like only a block from where I just went and put the flowers from where my godson was gunned down ten years ago. This has been an ongoing problem in a carjacking, a block away on Lee. Um, at a block from where I used to live, when I babysat him when he was a baby. And it's just, um, it's just, it's very disturbing that we seem to be going in the wrong direction now. It just gets worse and worse, and- and what's the plan? I could understand if we try a plan and it's not that successful, you go back to the drawing board and get another plan, but what is the plan? If- if you deny the problem, if you won't acknowledge the problem, there's- there's no chance of a solution. It starts with acknowledging that there's a problem. And then probably, um, it would be a good idea to get a, you know, a community, some kind of, um, community input, um, advisory committee. Some- some- something needs to be done. Um, anyway, I did have another couple of things, uh. So for the, um, the three thousand dollars that's left of the thing, uh, that was a great use for the displaced families, and- and with any money that's left, I would like to propose that, um, even though there is, uh, some, uh, money available now for undocumented workers who pay taxes and are part of our community and were not eligible for any of the aid, um, uh, that, and it's- it's very hard to access that. There's documentation required and- and it's, you know, it's not as easy as it sounds in that some of the left-out people. Another thing I would like to say that, um, as far as the amendment of the grant, I- I don't understand who writes these things. So if the council doesn't know what's on it, the planning board always says they just take whatever they get and decide if it's legal or not, like if it fits code. So who actually is writing the amendment? That's what I would like to know. And I would also like to say that the Mercado Esperanza group, um, event on Sunday was- was a wonderful event. Um, I would love to see that become a yearly thing. It was very beautiful, but it was really brought home to me, um, since the entertainers were in that street that's closed off and the audience was facing to them from the park. So, um, the people that got displaced out of that park were all lined up behind the entertainers, doing their thing. Um, and it- and the entertainer, to- to their, uh, I mean, they- they deserve a lot of credit. They were very, very tolerant. Um, you know, because people who were, you know, clearly under the influence were, you know, interrupting their performance, walking in front of them, drinking, uh, relieving themselves. Uh, it's clear that the problem wasn't solved. It was just swept off the triangle. Um, what- what- it, from the look of what I saw Sunday, what we need in this city is a detox and rehab center. Um, never mind a third cancer institute. How about- how about we take care of, um, the- the drug and the alcohol problem? Um, it doesn't seem right that we have these two huge medical conglomerates here, and I guess it's, you know, that's not where the big money is, but it certainly is where- where the community need is for a detox and a rehab center. And that was made abundantly clear to me on, uh, Sunday. So, um, did you have, uh, could you tell me who writes the redevelopment plan? I mean, the amendment, I know that there's already an existing redevelopment. Who's writing the amendment that you haven't seen?
The Director of Planning.
Is that Mr. Dominguez?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your- Do we have any other members of the public?
No, Madam President. No more members of the public on the list.
Madam President, if I could say just a few things, um, before we finish?
Of course.
I just wanna just quickly comment in some of the things that were said today. I think that, um, we have at the council, maybe not to the extent that some people would like, but I think that we have been at least clear that we recognize that there's an increase in- in violence, in gun violence in the city. Um, eh, the police know, this is not, everybody knows. I think that- that making a generalized statement that we don't care, some of us live in the areas that this shouldn't start happening. So I think it's, eh, eh, it's incorrect to think or assume that the council is not aware or doesn't care. Eh, we here to service everybody in the city, and especially those areas where we live that we are aware. Uh, we make it, you know, we make it known to those who are in leadership positions that we are concerned like everybody else. Eh, the other thing is that they're talking about, eh, that they haven't done, eh, anything has been done in terms of the community. I don't know. I didn't see, eh, Mr. Cradaville in the last two-piece rallies, that rallies that we have made in the community in areas where there have been an increase in shooting, where churches and different organizations in the community, including myself, have been meeting with residents, have been inviting them to come out and let them know that they're not by themselves. You know, that there is a community and a city that cares, that we understand what they're going through, and we trying to, we do as best as we can as a community, uh, eh, as well with the police, to make sure that- that we have a safe community for everyone, especially for the children. We had one at Hope Manor, and we had one at Joyce Kilmer Park, eh, it's- it's- Joyce Kilmer Park was in July, and Hope Manor, we just did it in September. And out of those conversations and those, uh, rallies that we had done, eh, residents were encouraged. They gave us, you know, they talk about their concerns. And it's same with the management, especially at Hope Manor. They have been working in different things, initiatives, to make sure that everybody feels safe. That's our priority. So there's some, you know, there, we have been working, maybe that it is not in the newspaper because good things usually don't make it to the newspaper. It's good to talk about the negative. Eh, and I might, I personally recognize the negative and things that need improvement, but I, we hear that so much, and our kids hear that so much, and people, that sometimes we need to remember the good things that are happening. Uh, and that doesn't mean that we are putting on the show, you know, under the rug, the- the situations and the negative things that are happening in our city. Eh, we all care, and we're trying to do our best, and I believe that the municipal police department is doing their best. Eh, they have been putting the same, some of the issues, and this has been explained before. Eh, there is, eh, press releases that the county has to be, eh, is the one in charge of putting it out there, eh, that they give information, as much information as they can. Eh, the latest incident from yesterday, um, there was an alert in next- next- next, um, next mixo alert, uh, telling people not to go into that area. So I think that, you know, eh, the- the city has been putting when there's something going on is now being, eh, in the website. So I think that, I'm not saying that those are the- the solutions, but I think that we doing something. Eh, and obviously, there's work that needs to be done, but that needs to be recognized also. Eh, in terms of the, eh, rehab that Ms. Thorp mentioned, rehab and detox, eh, there is places eh, that the souls who are affected by alcohol or drug addiction eh, can go. But we need to remember that they are adults. Adults have to make that decision. You cannot make them. Even if we have, eh, what we have now, it's difficult for them to accept it. So that's an, eh, individual decision, but, um, there is help out there that is available for the people. It's just that they have to decide to do it. You cannot make mandate anybody to go and get rehab, they're not ready for it. So eh, we have to understand what is, you know, what is the situation, right? And what is the- the cycle of addiction and how it's dealt with, especially in adults. Eh, so I just wanna make that clear, that we are, eh, aware, we are all concerned, and we will continue to work with the public and the residents to make sure that the best practices are done and that hopefully, eh, which is not a consolation. I always say that this is not, eh, it has been an, eh, eh, unusual year with the increase in violence. That is not unique to us. Nonetheless, it doesn't make it an excuse. But this is, eh, is going throughout the United States, and hopefully, eh, we can resolve this before it gets even worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President, Cora Ludl.
Yes, thank you.
Good night.